Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education Committee at the home meeting on October 11th, 2021. Time is now 6:30 PM. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
To God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, and with the love of liberty and justice for all.
In the course of the open meeting, all of us enacted to ensure the Board of Education have advanced notice come in to attend the meetings of seven bodies of which any business affecting their interest is discussed or agreed upon, in accordance with the provision of this Act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education that provides its need on January 8th, 2021, and as very hard pressed, Ms. Starlet. This notice was sent to the municipal clerest at the borough of Madawan and the township of Aberdeen, the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Ms. Case, can we do roll call? Mr. Rayner?
Here.
Dr. Delaney?
Here.
Ms. Friedman?
Here.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Bifor?
Here.
Ms. Whalen?
Here.
Ms. Osborn?
Here.
Ms. Swole?
Here.
With that, we move to the Board President's report. We're about a month into school and overall things seem to be going pretty well with the schools. We had a successful strategic planning kickoff meeting recently, and if you're interested in taking part, you can go to the district website, and on there, there's a signup sheet for committees and the planning conference that'll happen a weekend in January. Also, on the district website is a community survey as related to the American Rescue Plan Program. Your feedback can help as we prioritize the district's area of needs and as we allocate resources and develop the plan. Some of the areas that are reflected there are school programs, mental health services and support, technology, staffing, and facility improvements. This past Friday, we met our first home game on the new turf, and it was fantastic. So much excitement in the air. It was amazing to see all the participants in the field that night. The stands were filled with students, community members, just so much excitement. Additional athletic teams will also be using the field this week, and we have some senior nights happening this week, which is very exciting. Good luck to all the students participating in the various events. There's some competitions going on and other activities this week. Lastly, just wanted to remind parents that if you see your child struggling or having issues adjusting to being back in school full-time in person, we do encourage you to reach out to your child's counselor, as there are a lot of resources that have been put into place and support available to them and to do. With that, we will move to curriculum and instruction. Mr. Bottomier?
Good evening, thank you. Beginning with Part B travel, two staff members attending Lloyd Patterson University Early Childhood Leadership Center in our areas. One staff member attending preschool teacher mentorship for our specialist workshop, and four staff members attending the NJU Child Study Team, providing a meeting for students who are desperate for a hearing workshop at no cost, and one staff member attending the New Jersey College of Health Conference. Moving on to Part B, curriculum instruction. Item number one is asking the Board to approve the addition of Anthony Sirda, a list of miller's to serve on the school improvement panel for the middle school for the 21-22 school year. Item number two is asking the Board to approve the MARC Emergency Virtual Auto construction plan for the 21-22 school year. This is a requirement for the KRP grant, and it must be in place and posted on the district's website by the end of this month. Item number three is asking the Board to approve the submission of quality single accountability continuum NJQ SAC district performance review for the 21-21, 2022 school year. Item number four is asking the Board to approve the secondary to the 21-22 school calendar to reflect the change from March 9th as a staff and service day for preschool teachers for the, and that is all for curriculum instruction.
Student services, Ms. Perez.
Student services, under item number one, we recommend that the board grant that to include the accounting provider for the 21-22 school year on a national basis and annual assessments. The cost per return psychiatric evaluation is listed along with effective dates. These assessments will be utilized for after students that are required to make a visit and home assessments will provide actual social evaluations to ensure safety. This has to be done at the national level. Under item number three, we're asking the Board approval for the school to attend an active education for the 21-22 school year. The schools are listed along with the cost and the number of dates. Under item number three, we're asking the Board approval for the service contract with the practice school solution for the 21-22 school year. To the fellow services, costs is listed and effective dates. Practice school solutions will provide therapy with a month's worth of treatment. Allow one part-time high-end month's professional for the school year. This professional will work 21 hours a week at Keys and Happy, and that is funded through the Keys grant. Under item number four, we're asking for Board approval for the following price of CDI curriculum based instruction for the 21-22 school year. The stores and activities are listed, along with the number of students and its effective dates. That includes student services.
Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Leen.
Thank you, good evening. To the personnel, we have one action item for Board to consider this evening. We're inviting the Board to approve the following staff members. Wait for the Assistant School Business Manager, Secretary of Social, with salaries listed and effective start dates listed. That's the only action item for personnel. Under non-action items for the Board to consider, section A, reservations and retirements. There are two reservations listed with amended dates. Item number two, access, three staff members who are listed on the bottom page one with their tax leave and effective dates. This continues on top of page two of six of additional staff members with updated dates. Under section C, equipment for new hires for the 21-22 school year. Placeholders, TD, the positions that are listed. This continues on top of page three of six. On page three, item number two, extracurricular activities for 21-22 school year. There are placeholders are listed for athletic activities. Item number three, school counselors. There's one placeholder for school counselor activities. We anticipate that being filled in for the October grant. Item number four, curriculum instruction title brands. There are two staff members that are listed who are the fifth in title one, the fourth in order. Continuing with the title brands on page four of six, and on the bottom page five of six, there are placeholders with names that will be listed when asking the Board to be October granted. On page five, item five, college student servers. Two names are listed with their proper staff number, location, and these students. Item number six, staff rate changes, one staff member listed, this is for a new road. Nothing for item number seven. Item number eight, college teachers for 21-22 school year. Two names are listed who were volunteer activities at high school. Item nine, mentor teachers, one additional staff member listed, the mentor for 21-22 school year. Item 10, additional staff members listed who are moving compensation for 21-22 school year. Item number 11, under item 18, other one that is the hit of the word for the September 27th meeting. And item two, salary adjustments. Three staff members with their effective salaries. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. And policies, please.
Your policy? We'd like to recommend to the Board for first reading of the following policies. Policy 2415.05, policy regulation 2415.20, policy 2422, policy 2431, policy 2431.3, policy 2429, policy 2451, policy 2454, policy 2622, policy 6511. That concludes the policies.
Thank you. And finance, Ms. Case.
Good evening. I'm the Director of Finance. We've been arrowed for September as well as the bills listed for October. Number two would be the transfer of major funds status for August. Number three would be reporting for July and August. At the top of each, two would be the adoption for the 22-23 budget calendar. Five would be, five instances will be the annual memorized agreements between the school and the police departments, set hold for routine travel. Three will be approval of additional routes for the 21-22 school year. Nine will be the award of joint transportation routes that are being filled in for the next board meeting. At the top of, and continuing through the top of the page four, number 10 would be bus evacuation drills as well as fire evacuation drills for the month of November.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second on the agenda items, which are curriculum and instruction, item A, travel, student services, items one, three, four, personnel, item one, and policy, the first reading of the policies? Motion in a second?
All motion. I'll say it.
Okay. Okay, and any questions or comments from the Board on the agenda items?
I have a comment, Corinna. Comment, question, motion. There was a lot of policy that was on the agenda this week. I had, and I saw, I was the only one who asked for questions concerning policy 2422. There's a lot of indicators leading to that. I'd like to ask if you can pay me a post read, even though that's a little unusual, but I have so much time, so that we can have a meaningful discussion on the first three on that.
Ms. Leen? Okay, then you will take your question. I'll look at it. Wait, wait, just a second. Okay.
Mrs. Corinna just asked that the Board members have additions to the edits and policies that they could send those to the left of the red for the left side of the document.
Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion in a second on the request to table policy regulation P2422?
Roll motion.
Okay. Okay. So we're gonna open it up to...
I'll just call. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I just wanted to, which I had sent in my email, that I'm so glad to see that we're using, I think Kizzy said something last week or last meeting, Home Delight Middle Town for her kids, as far as transferring them or the special needs that they may have had, so I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you. Any other Board members with questions or comments on agenda items?
If I could add to that, I did bring up last, the last meeting, it was the most important thing. That was something I was happy to see, because it does save not only us money, but it allows those kids to continue moving around in school environment and not having 45-minute trips to and out of district placement, so they have more time at home. I don't have to go through that, so it may be, maybe it was a way.
Anything else before public comment? Ms. Stone?
I had mentioned about number five and six being shared. Is that something that we'll get to see, where there is? Our items are RABs two or three for five minutes translation.
Yes, you can find it in the agenda folder.
Okay, so it is there.
It is there.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice talk tonight.
Anything else? Okay, then we'll move to public comments. Public comments relating to agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to Board President, and no participant may address or question Board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the Board's intention to cycle comment on matters of which are may concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the Board urges them to seek guidance beforehand under their own legal advice. Any public comments?
Can anyone hear me? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Cindy Centaur, from Lloyd Road. First question I have is, well, not really a question, let's let you know. So my daughter came today, she wanted to talk to you guys, but, you know, kids get scared. They're trying to tell you, you guys are elected officials and they're here for us, and there's nothing to be scared of, but, you know, they get nervous. So what she actually wanted to talk about is Lloyd Road has an issue with lunches. The big thing is, by the time kids get their food, they get like five minutes to eat. And then kids are sneaking their food outside to recess, and she says that's very unsanitary to have to sneak food outside. I'm thinking it's probably because they're trying to really hard to sort of distance, and, but whatever it is, it's not working. In social media, there's huge discussions from parents about how lunches have become a problem, so they actually said some of the kids are starting a petition about the lunch situation, which I love, that's great, and, you know, shows they're taking initiative, but something that definitely has to be addressed. So that's the first. So the second thing is, I want to talk to you guys about the recent school closure. Now, this doesn't affect me directly because my daughter's in Lloyd, but what I do want to know is, how easy is it to close a school? Like, is it one case? Is it 10 cases? Is it 50 cases? Is it a hundred cases? What is that decision? And then when that decision is made, who makes it? You guys vote on it? Are you told that you have to close the school? I want to know what goes into it. For example, I am recent to the district. I've learned that, you know, about a year now, this is my second year in the district. The first year was just awful, but I'm just kidding, you guys aren't really stressed, and I get it. But I was coming from New York City, Florida, I moved my entire year, went to KIMI, my kids' school here in City, Florida, and, like, they closed for snow days, and parents freaked. And that's like two feet of snow. I mean, we're freaking, so for me to hear that a virus is closing the school, I'm wondering how easy is it to close a school? Because I have to be honest, your letters aren't the greatest. The letters you guys sent, they really lead to a lot of misinformation and gossip. Between the recent closure and the issue that happened recently at the middle school, those lines are terrible, terrible. What happens is we'll go on social media, we also talk to each other, to do this, to do that, oh, I put this, there were shooting, someone with a gun, I mean, it's just craziness. So I feel like if the letters were more detailed, I think it would avoid a lot of those issues. Like, I think if I would have had the letter that said, 100 kids got sick, 20 staff members, they were in a range of grades, and we contacted the Board of Health, and they mentioned it's a good idea to close, I mean, I just feel like you guys are vague to the point of causing parents to go to that area of misinformation or gossip. I know that the recent thing in the middle school was a huge uproar, especially because some pages were even, like, every time we posted, they took down, which made people get even more heightened. My daughter was in New York High School in New York. They had a couple of those, you know, like, people playing jokes or whatever, and we always got immediate response from the principal. I know you guys sent out the robocall, but I just feel like your idea of maybe giving less information to make people feel better doesn't work. In fact, usually with robocalls that we used to get, New York will give an abundance of information just to stop the fact that people can, you know, they don't need to gossip in the area of misinformation, so I really think you guys could work a little harder on information you give out, and I think it'd be better for you, because then you weren't going to have that, you know, that misinformation or that gossip that's happening between parents. But I do really want to know, like, how do you guys close a school? Like, what is, what is the driving factor? Do you guys vote on it? Are you told that you have to close a school? How many cases? Because as a parent, I get up at 6:00, I get on the 6:20 bus in the morning, and coming home, I get home at 7:00 o'clock. So for me to find childcare is very difficult. So I'm just wondering how you guys go about it?
I don't want to get into it.
No, no, okay.
So just family first to the Lloyd Road lunches. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, because I'm unaware of that, and I'm sorry, I hope next time you're more comfortable to talk to us. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's not something I've been, been aware of. I believe, I want to say lunches typically, is it 20 minutes? I don't know exactly. Is it 20 minutes in Lloyd Road? So we need to figure out exactly why they're only getting the five minutes. Is it because we are social distancing? Is it like the time it takes for them to walk down, oh, we get there, be able to make the classrooms directly, so we can talk about...
I think it definitely is social distancing, but...
Right, it definitely is. Yeah, but we don't like the idea of them feeling like they need to sneak food outside. I agree with you, that does seem unsanitary, so we can definitely discuss that more and get back to you on that. I can ask Dr. Mike to follow up on that one. In terms of the revealing closure, I'll briefly talk about it, and then have it to Ms. Perez to answer more depth on that. We did have to close Rubine Drive, the letter did go out. We tried to share as much information as we're able to. I can definitely talk to Dr. Mike about concerns about, is there anything additional? We can, I can tell you, it wasn't one or two cases. It was across grades, multiple classrooms. I don't know if I can give the exact number, but, you know, I haven't talked to, has Ms. Perez, data from there. We also did not take a vote, we totally vote against it publicly, so therefore it is not a decision. The superintendent does make those decisions, because he runs the district. And then, more specifically, Ms. Perez, do you want to take it from there?
Sure. Hi, and thank you. Next time I'll hook you up, because it's from the Lloyd High School. If not, go to the principal, too. So the school closure at Rubine Drive was in collaboration with the Department of Health. So Dr. Micah and the team met with or spoke with the Department of Health. There were multiple cases, 23 cases in a 24-hour period of time. So the Department of Health, their recommendation, because it was only in that short span of time, was to close schools.
But is the number of kids around the school, so 23 cases, how many do you have?
It's a little over 300. K to three. We did do a deep cleaning all weekend, and we are very, very optimistic that we'll be able to open school on Wednesday. Something that will go out to the parents and the community of Rubine Drive, letting them know either way we're going to be, we're optimistic that we will be able to.
Just one quick follow-up. How common is it for the district to close schools?
It's not, yeah. I don't know, since my time at the Board, we haven't done this before in terms of this happening. Youngish COVID.
The reasons we prepared the H-back was because we used to close for weeks. It's one of the selling points of getting the H-back, and as an adult, it's all a good thing in consideration that was brought.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My name is Andy Ver, and I'm from Point Department, Madawan. I'm sure this is what you guys have found out from a little of a wise situation with the department of middle school. It's out of control on the seventh and eighth grade there. I was talking to, this is Gonzales, the vice principal, and this is Galvin. It has come to my attention that there were seven fights last week. Not fights between one crowd and another, literally groups of kids fighting other groups of kids. And when it comes to punishment, the, Mrs. Gonzales told me that this would be worse. This is your rules, you have to punish and remove. I had spoken to her in depth about what are we doing to get these kids to be able to socially interact with each other after they've isolated for so long? And, you know, I joked, I said, we're a wise, but really not funny. And then lunchtime, we got two to spend so far. Unbelievable, he got hit, he returned the favor, not did it, but doing something else. He got to trouble, he did it, he came home being like, oh, let's not do that. Let's not, but that's the way these kids are feeling in the school. It is awful. There are no, as for Mrs. Gonzales, there are no social interaction groups happening, there's no overall, it's punished and removed, punished and removed. They are giving no contact orders between the kids, which understandably, if kids are going along, you don't want them to hear each other. That's not solving the problem at all. I mean, seven fights in one week, that's like super excessive, really excessive, and really concerning as a parent. I don't get it, I don't understand why they're now working as hard to teach these kids to learn how to socially interact with each other. They do everything online, it's really easy to put somebody out online and they walk away, because there's no one physically there. When it comes to school, they're fighting in school, they're fighting outside of school, they're on Snapchat fighting with each other, and obviously, as a district, you can't do anything about what these kids are doing online, but it's pouring over into the school. I think I was talking to Mrs. Galvin, I was talking to her about that once, and I go, oh, I think my other son's, you know, yeah, so she's like, oh, great, I think there's almost 25 phone calls she gets a week, because it happens to be on her IP meeting, and she's like, oh, your other son, this is his name? I'm like, yeah, I'm like, oh, see, beautiful, let's figure out what's going on. I've been told that there is a waiting list for the audience seating and services that is hard to get, but we have cares out there. Where's it going? Why are we not using that to help these kids? Like, what are we doing? What's happening? We're just on the budget, it's kind of like a general of like, you know, 300, 352, that's it, and it's hard to figure out. We are the ones knowing. I mean, I even offer, I write grants for a living, if you guys have a great community help, offer our services for free, if you're writing, like, why should I have to do that? I don't mind, because, you know, I'm often it, but why aren't we doing that? Why aren't we as a community figuring out how do these kids socially interact with each other again, in a positive way? Because, I don't know, it's concerning, really concerning, that there were seven group fights last week. I think they said between seven and nine. I had a conversation on Wednesday. So, you know, my kids are in the school on Friday, because I'm going to be honest with you, after that, what happened at the school on Thursday at 10:00 in the morning, and we don't even get phone calls until door closing in the afternoon to let us know that there was a possible threat to the kids. But I get it, you don't want a lot of people running to the school, putting kids out of school, it's TI, but to have like a really big, hey, something sort of happened, but we took care of it, and so, don't worry, everything's fine. My middle son is pretty tough, he don't really care, and he was like, oh, it's not worth it. And I have my first, you know, if the school itself can't handle it, kids not fighting with each other, how as a parent are we even comfortable with, because there are kids there, and they're holding, they're not going to get punished with these, or physically assaulted, or, and then when it happens, it's a physical suspension, have a nice day, no contact. Like, it's a bigger problem. You can't just tell people to settle, and then just let it go, so have to figure out why the kids are fighting. I mean, I have an idea, but they don't want to interact with each other, it's a high standard of society. It's hurting me that, as per the life of the new administration, there's no sense of believing in that.
Thank you for sharing. I have a child in medical school as well, so I understand your concerns, and, you know, it's concerning to hear this, at least to that extent. I know Ms. Perez can talk specifically to the programs that we do have in place for the kids, because I don't think it's just a mission to move on, I think there are plans in place, and she can talk to that. Also, I can pass it to Ms. Case to talk specifically how we've spent that money, because we have spent it on a number of things over the course of the past year and a half, so we can get into more detail on that, just so we know how we have spent it, because we've certainly spent it on a number of items, both kids and for the school district. So, in terms of the threat that happened last week, we do trust in the police department to handle the investigation and to tell us, you know, what the outcome is of the investigation for children due to privacy laws, there's, we're limited sometimes in terms of exactly how much we can say. Even us, we've got here on the board, personally, don't hear every detail. We hear part of it, but we don't hear every detail because of the privacy laws. But Ms. Perez, do you want to take first the map case in terms of what we're going to do with this?
So first I'll say that we were, we were sad to hear about the fights as well at the moment, so we went back to discuss with administration in terms of what was being done. There was a heavy focus on professional film, and obviously with the teaching staff in terms of students reconnecting with each other, and also staff reconnecting with our students. Students have been, we all know, out of school for almost two years, so now they all came together. That doesn't excuse the behavior, however, in terms of prevention... However, in terms of prevention, the YNCA, we do have a contract with them. And in this case, we'll talk about the S T R money, but we did hire an additional counselor to provide services for the students. In regards to SEL, character education, it's on its way in terms of guidance counselors also going into the classroom. It's just the way the schedule fell in terms of, how would I say, getting into the classroom with the counselors. Once, because it was pretty choppy in September, but the days on. So those are on their way as far as with going in meetings with students, there are social groups going on as well with the counselors. And in terms of the YNCA waitlist, there is a, and I'm sure everyone is well aware of this shortage of staff. That is one of the professionals that we're short-staffed with. Not just staff, that's across the county. There was a heavily, there were a lot of people either laid off or decided, you know, not to return back to work. And counseling is one of those fields, so we're working diligently on that. And also just trying to see how else we can better support the students at home with the staff, in-house staff that we have. So whether it's at other buildings and going over to provide the support. The class sizes in terms of sixth grade, seventh grade, they are larger than what we've had in the past. So in terms of the kids, even in the classroom, the setup, it's just more kids too. So we're looking at that in terms of ratios to student to counselor as well as to the teaching staff. Mr. Wells administration did hold an assembly, an immediate assembly after the incident that happened in terms of the fights, particularly with the sixth grade class. I can, I'll definitely, we've been in conversation as far as with just holding additional assemblies and being prevented in terms of not just doing it after the fact. In terms of the consequences with students, we can get into great detail, but it is not just consequences and done. There is mediation and there is conflict resolution. There has to be. And we hope that our parents are collaborative in that respect, that they partake and they're talking to their students, to their child, that they're going to engage in this conflict resolution and also the mediation process. It doesn't, was the principle of the year at Montalongo High School. It doesn't, the participation isn't always there, but we do, it's not something we can handle in terms of the students participating. It does entail that a parent has to provide part of that, yeah.
Do you say mediation? Do you mean like student in school? But I'll just say for my personal experience, I got two calls in the last September. One of them, I believe, is coming. I said, "I already said it," he already told me exactly. But the conversation that I had was kind of like, "This is what happened, this is the punishment, don't let it happen again." So I was kind of like, "Okay." It was on the secret from my record, you know? And it's a matter of, my son's in seventh, he figured last time he was in school, it was a fit. And then the also point is that a lot of kids stayed back and their parents kept them. So the range of ages in those schools is so varied. You have kids who could possibly be freshmen or sophomores in high school or in eleventh grade or seventh grade, you know what I mean? So it just makes it difficult. And I'm just kind of curious as to what you say mediation for the faculty. Does that mean, I'm for it, you know, we had a conversation on both sides, whatever, it's what we can do. I'm there. We're going to jump on one foot, let's get it done because I'm trying to reason why this is the government, the society, you know? But I'm frightened sometimes the partnership of school is not necessarily there. So that's just my question about mediation.
In terms of mediation, it's between student and student? So the conversation, I wasn't in the room, so I don't want to-
I'm right there.
Yeah, student to student in regards to, just getting to the pause and not necessarily to walk away that they're going to be friends and hang out. But just being able to be civil and respectful of each other in their own space. That answers.
Yeah, just a thought as we were talking, you brought up how this is a community thing, I agree with who it is. Maybe it's something the PTA, PTO can discuss with Mr. Wells and the administrative teams. Maybe do normally field in the end of the year, but organize some sort of team building or school activity that is fun and kids can participate in. And I want to call the faculty to the student basketball game is, like, their team building. Joy is not anything to do with humble, free to the administration, that might be something. They do just have a legal respect, kind of, the club would did a really wonderful job. I know that Abby had done some side effort. But they also did an assembly that I have to say was really excellent. I don't know what was going on to the legal respect, but that's kind of where it all is happening, including the respect. So I do have to say thank you to the people for doing, for participating and having that December. Because that didn't make it happen somehow.
I just also want to, I just want to add that students need to have a sense of belonging in their school. So now that clubs are up and panning at each of the schools, now's the time for, you know, parents to encourage them to take argument. Even if they try one, they have to start off somewhere. And we're open to hearing from parents, just like if there's a new club that needs to be started at the schools too, that we can try where they're just getting more students to be, you know, to feel that maybe they've been in and have some belonging so that they even want to be in this one. To connect, it's about connection.
To create new clubs has something easy to do. I know my uncle's side actually told him. But oh, I'm sure you have a parent who created a new club and said, "What's there is there, that there's no room to create anything new." He's in eighth grade, so I'm going to do, I'm going to do that outside of them.
I mean, they recently started the esports club there, which I think are huge turnout, the initial meeting, like huge. So yes, there are opportunities to create new clubs. We can talk to the administration and the board as well. If you have specific ideas, they did start the esports club. We've started new clubs in the past. We even, you know, started the hockey, wasn't initially here until a couple of years ago in high school. So we have started good things and I think once a parent expresses an interest and we sometimes gauge an interest overall to see, you know, how many people might participate in it from there. But yeah, esports is another good example of something that just recently talked about. They got to a grand final four and it's going to be great, I think, for year and a half.
Mrs. Gold, I just wanted to comment, when we do an HIV or a, you know, when we do a report about kids fighting, this is something that we can afford constantly and ask a million questions. And there is a counseling component that is part of, correct? Ms. Perez, so it's absolutely, because we're always very worried with what's going to happen, what's going, who do they say, where do they come? So trusting that we are, we're all characters, that we get, but we're on that. So anything that comes across ours, we're always asking the family about that. So it's actually not just cut and dry, don't do it kind of thing. But to be clear, we don't see every fight that comes.
Well, no, we only send different reports.
I know, so it's very, the report that Bill Edge is not getting very good, honestly. That was a couple of years ago, so hopefully that maybe better job being gone. It's always really stressful stays in the work room of the school. We have a cycle where we have tech. And the school is just like, you know, that, you know, they suspended, because I told them to keep it standing. And when they suspended it, I said, "I'm fed up of something." He really, and surprise, it was an awful situation and that, I mean, he's in eighth grade now. I'm just hoping that maybe the work that he drove, his album, push under the, under the rocks, they're like, "Oh, well, they both are mean to each other." After I say, you know, it's like where-
I want to say, I think everybody up here is committed to, we really don't want kids, or even the parents, to have concerns about their kids going into school or society. We want the kids to feel like they belong, like they have a place there, they have a friend, you know? So I think it's our goal and I think a lot of the work that we're doing right now is to make that happen. Especially after the time that kids came home for such a long period of time and some of the kids weren't even in school quite ready for almost two years. So, and just as much on one of your last questions, if you want to touch on funding, Ms. Case, if you have any, how you've turned out?
So we wanted to ensure that we faced in a well-rounded way. So a couple of the areas which was utilized for was a part-time enrichment teachers, performing after-year tutoring, subscriptions that were necessary, a clinician to help staff with SEL components, resources for staff, technology for staff and students, professional development with staff, cleaning supplies that were necessary. And another big thing was the summer program, which I'm transportation and coordinator for inter-mentee support.
Hi, I'm Southern Bunker in Golden. I just wanted to be back on for, I'm a sixth grader too, and I have to inform you Friday because I felt like, again, this year, all the little bits for your kids. And I heard that there were police in and out of school day long, up and down the hallway. And then the, you know, just like you said, from you, but from Mr. Wells, too vague, where I was comfortable that I had enough information to make my decision to whether I felt it was safe or not. And I'm not looking for kind of meaning of anything like that, but like a police report is public, it's a court legal. So I would have liked to know, like, hey, you were told that there was something written in the data. Mr. Wells didn't say anything. He said there was crack, they just couldn't handle it, got it. You're getting information on kids, we're like, it's not really company. You know, it seemed pretty serious, the kids were staying in the cops, you know, living all day, walking down the hallway. So the way it came across, like, it was no big deal, everything was calm. I didn't feel like, happy for pay. So like Abby was saying, or Cindy was saying, you're missing a little bit of success, parents say. I don't know why any of that would come to you with legal. You're not sharing your child's name, which I understand. But just a little bit more information, we've been a little bit helpful. My son is witness to one of the little fights in the auditorium. He's younger, first grade, he just turned 11 at the end of summer. But he's still very innocent. I do see it. There was one teacher, I don't know if you're telling it, just for whoever's here or is listening online, wasn't aware of what they were doing at middle school. Because of COVID, they were allowing kids to go to the auditorium to eat, to space out a little bit more. And they put one teacher in there and they did not break up a fight because they've like, about five kids, another five kids. One kid got seriously injured, trash can was lifted and thrown over somebody. Somebody had to go run, you had another teacher separate it. That was one. And I know, I was in a school, fights happen, not normally in sixth grade. I'm pretty sure in middle school, that happened, or sixth grade. So my question is, if I remember, at middle school, there was like a security person. There were hall monitors. I asked my son, there was a hall monitor, because he was in middle school, he's out. A kid in the bathroom came up to him and said, "You know what I did, it's on the bus." Called him by the neck, pulled him back, it snapped, it broke, and I'm like, "Ugh." My son didn't know what was going on. He was like a little shaken up, but because the kid bolted, like, he helped pay. So he went back, told the teacher, the teacher told him, "Go to the office to get a new mask." They only had a belt mask. So he went back to his locker, looked for his couple of school masks the day before, and put them on. I asked if there are hall monitors, like, I don't think I'd be in the bathroom with them, but it's because there are like people walking around. There are hall monitors, he said, "There's some lady that sits in the hall now." I just, again, this is information from my child. I documented this and wrote it to Mr. Wells, just so it was there. I'm really thinking you answer as to, okay. So what's going on? Like, you have a high school, it's pretty different in there. Like, middle school is a puppy, you can't handle, hand down for that. But I do think it's a little crazy that that may play, happen in such a short span of time. And again, my concern with that, if we get broken up, we are understaffed. So I think that a security officer, if it was coming in out of a hallway or a building, if you have something like that, is it something they're going to include in the future?
So as I mentioned earlier, completely understand the concern because I do have a child there as well. So I understand, I know that we are actively working on the situation, are aware of the situation in terms of sharing more information. I can talk to Dr. Micah and Mr. Rivera, our local councils, to better understand how much we can and can't. I can tell you that police did investigate, so yes, there were police in the hallway. And they didn't like it to be non-critical. We have, you know, complete information from them in terms of what their findings are. In terms of hallway monitors and teachers, maybe Ms. Perez, if you can talk to them a little bit more in terms of who's in the hallway during the day, I could help or?
You are correct that there are staff in the hallway. I don't know if they were sitting or not.
He said, "I actually heard that there was a really good one, so the sixth grade hall, there's a buddy called, right, look like a corner." I remember going, but I think he was looking out from right over there. He said, "That's really sick." And like, they should be walking around, but being there.
This, so in terms of supervision, this is part of what we're working with in terms of administration. So I can't get in greater detail as far as with how many like staff members are in the hallways and everything. But the discussion of supervision is really discussed.
Okay. And Mr. Wells, did you, in the assembly, calling that? And my son said that he set a table together, we could get all sorts of looks. We did the numbers because for kids that have nothing to do with this, it's totally unfair. It's also totally unfair for kids who are clearly acting out, clearly not mentally balanced and treated, things going bad. Take something from them, they're so very mean, not against either. Like what Abby was saying, I know some school districts, the principal was preparing action, he was like volunteering. Now like circumstantial community service power, is that something that we're going to decide or local, particular school is going to do?
That's the particular school.
It's my fault.
That's the particular school in the administration. So those are the things that we are discussing, but as far as with other options, I suppose to come back to what Ms. Perez said in terms of just the consequences and done, that's part of the conflict resolution. So like you're talking, what you're saying, community service, service learning, sometimes it includes even a presentation to their peers or to staff.
And one of the things that you tried to talk about with the preservation, I know my son was here last year and towards the end of the year, he's like, like, speaking out of trouble, he's like, "Mr. Yachey, that counselor there." And he was trying to get a call in, he was a witness to something, and he had to like talk to other students. But I think this was great. That's not happening in the state currently because we're down.
That is, but it's just set up to accommodate as far as what it comes.
I think of like that one fight, it was five kids, like five other kids. Yeah, like, I don't know, it seems like, I don't know, something was being seen, but I mentioned this with my son being with it. And then they were being involved in other fights too, that we heard about. So, I just can't, my son is thriving in middle school and testing the lens, he's a faculty sixth grader. And I'm so pumped for him. And I was also super bummed that all this happened because, do you want to say all of it? I kind of moved because I just felt like, kind of sleeping on the floor, felt like, like, not healthy, not my child. Or just nation.
I totally understand because I, you know, for being on board, went through that, it's a similar situation that happened in one of the schools. It's not actually in the same school, the years before I was even on. So I totally understand your concern. One thing that I can recommend, especially now that we have the board, is reaching out to Mr. Wells or one of the vice principals and having a discussion with them too, because I think that they can help you hopefully feel more comfortable about sending in versus like this mask, now like that goes out to all the parents. Like, if you have the conversation, then I think that would help you feel more, it's like, I'm being a parent and on the board, I'm actually privileged to have a little bit more information, so, you know, that helps my comfort level. But I was there before this and I know the fear, but it goes through your head. Do I send them, do I not? So I would recommend reaching out to them.
I did send him, like, it was like 3:00.
Okay.
No, about the incident that happened in the day, in the back there with my son. And not only 20 minutes later, my girlfriend texts me, this kid got out. My son himself, he used to call me, tell me what he heard, that they're all, feel like in soccer, the day they were talking about it. So a bunch of my girlfriend's daughters were doing field hockey, they're like, "Hey, did you hear about this?" And my partner sent me a call in. And then I picked it up and he was like, "Oh, yeah, I'm reading some of it." I'm like, "What?" So it was like terrible timing, so like, who else would have heard about it? He did, he responded to me later that day, but I know after the day that he had gotten, just like, he was passionate about me. But I just began, there are people, there are people that are listening, everybody's feeling- Um, but I just began, because people, there are people that are listening, everybody's really weird, people are on the phone. I don't know why they want to know, happens in high school, just don't want to know.
Misses Paulie, um, I was on the board for the last time that we had an incident. Um, and I just want to talk a minute to, um, our responsibility, because I remember a lot of parents were upset because of the information given. But so, I'm pretty sure the process, we handed over to the police department. They then do a thorough investigation on the family side and school side. And so they determined whether credible, because a lot of parents had that question, what is credible? Um, and so Dr. White, I had an assembly, so people could ask questions when we talked about it. And basically, I, I guess the police department determines whether the threat that the child made at that time, could even occur, um, do they have the means, I guess, to do it? So we, you know, we really wait for them to give us that determination. Um, and so, thank God we have a, you know, a good police department that we trust. But it's really up to them to make that decision. So I guess that's where that ties in the process of them looking into it.
No, that's fine, but I remember it was a couple of years ago, there was something that happened in the high school, but it happened like, perfectly in a man, I don't know if you can remember, a little snack cap thing? And there were screenshots, and the police were involved, and it cracked, was that in high school?
The first Martinez is referring to, they said that.
Yeah, so I remember, again, I was, my child was infected, he was in school, my dad was all over the comments. And I remember there being like pretty detailed from either the principal or maybe not from like that, but that would actually occur, like, you receive information from social media account, and this is what happened. I remember, I remember that, like, some sort of official thing, or like, oh, this is actually what happened, this makes sense. You know what I'm saying? I think that, that can happen, it was, it was a, yeah, we all were.
And I can't stop Dr. White, if he can reach out to you directly on this, just to.
Right, so like, I can feel that something was really getting through that. I'm not sure if you, like, Mr. Wells, he said, like, there was a threat around, like, this is what happened. I mean, that didn't seem like, like, confidential, right? I would rather hear it from someone's dad that, like, you have to know, that it, like, got from a kid, you know? Um, I don't know if they make a difference, but like, it's in my head, I was like, well, and then like, well, they got. Like, well, I know it's your kid, it's your kid, it's like, definitely something like.
Uh, I'll definitely have Dr. White reach out to you in the morning, um, so he can discuss it further with you.
Okay, sure, okay, definitely.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Abby, something. Um, I don't have a personal work I'm doing before school started. I had asked a question about the P E R twelve that I'm on, homeschool program that a lot of states utilize. It's funded by the district, um, and they had, and that are probably not those states that are speaking for reasons. And I, maybe, or just want to say, oh, we're going to look into it, and see, like, about that. I'm just curious as to what steps are going to take, if you're looking into that, or offering that to the parents and district, um, for whatever reasons that they would want to use that program. Um, I know that New Jersey's kind of, sort of, pretty, like, loose about homeschool requirements. I'm just curious if there was any on Google on that.
Ms. Perez, are you able to talk to this one?
Ms. Perez, can you repeat the first part?
Oh, sorry.
I thought everything else except that.
Um, I have a question, before I begin, before school started, I asked about that homeschool, certified homeschool P E R twelve program that other states use, that is certified homeschool, district case, what's the number of people who utilize that? If they're unable or going to send their kids to these buildings, or whatever, and I know that, um, Jordan definitely uses that. Um, one of the programs, which is actually, I was, I think, a lot of, I was looking at. I was looking into it, and actually, one of the programs that Jordan uses, the homeschool I was looking at. And I'm just curious if any of the boards said, oh, we're looking into it, and discussing further, or just if anything else.
We have not revised, made any revisions in terms of homeschooling at this time. Um, parents who have requested homeschooling, we provide them with resources, et cetera, um, to make sure that there's still connection between home and, you know, sure these students come back. Um, the Office of Curriculum and Instruction have shared information to those, to both parents. Jordan did not revise any, make any revisions to include what you're sharing.
I need to follow up, for a second. Um, is this something that she saw before, where she said that her son was in the bathroom, or some kid walked up to her? Um, since we're in math, so we can't say who he is, and then one pulling it. Um, are we seeing an increase in that type of, like, anonymous in the schools at all? Are we seeing, like, kids, because they're at math, they feel like they're, like, nuts? And they're able to act out a little bit? Um, are we seeing any of that? I'm just wondering, because she mentioned that, so I'm thinking, is it happening in any of the other schools? Have you guys heard anything about that? Or is this the first time you've heard?
Just, uh, no, we have not, that's the first time.
So this is the first time you've heard? Okay, so that's those. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah?
So, just a question, twenty-one, I believe. Just a quick comment, I would say, um, I'm really pleased to see some equipment for the preschool kids that shop more. Um, I know that has been a bumpy road, and they don't have access to play around there because of the age requirements and licensing, but, um, I heard that places will be quarter for them, they get open door prices for them, apply, you know? If they happen to something, and they're getting more, um, you know, those more supply, they go, they go around there. So I just want to say I'm very thankful for that, and I appreciate that commitment, um, and support for the kids. And if anybody needs more, I'm here.
Thank you. Um, if there are any more fully comments, then we're going to move to call call on action items. And those, again, were curriculum and instruction, I think, travel, student services, I think, one through four, personnel item one, policy, the purchasing of policies minus, um, P two four two shirts. Ms. Gray, huh?
Yes.
Dr. Galaney?
Yes.
Ms. Raven?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yeah.
Mr. Montom?
Yes.
Ms. Porzora?
Yes.
Ms. Waylon?
Yes.
Ms. Tazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business?
I perhaps have a new business. Um, so, in the interest of full disclosure, I just came to tell you, senior night for tennis, they're going on a whole week. Um, for whatever reason, um, like, the girls' soccer team also had senior night. And so a lot of the boys' soccer team came over to watch the girls' soccer, the girls' tennis team senior night. And that was, um, it was really cool for the girls to have that kind of support from the seniors to have that support. So if anybody is looking for something to do, if they go on the website and see senior nights, it would really be very meaningful, I think, to the students and to those parents coming up.
I have one Thursday too.
So Thursday.
The boy soccer.
Okay, so boy soccer is Thursday night, and, um, I missed the other sports. Um, but, and, and, you know, these are really great community events. And if we get, I think, um, kids out, supporting other kids, that maybe they will have more of that community feeling. Um, I had, on Friday, being on the board, being board president at the time, COVID hit and shut us down. Uh, I, just an amazing feeling walking to the field Friday night, seeing all the houses empty, of all the families walking to the football stadium. Looking at the field that we had budgeted for, I think, Ms. Martinez is aware of this, and he was budgeted for three different years, and we weren't going to do it, um, for one reason or another. And we were able to get it done, and watching those seniors play, at least one home game on their own turf, was amazing. Um, that was something that we had been trying to do for years, were able to do it. And it was just to walk and see that dog pound film with the kids. The cheer team, and then it wasn't just about football, the cheer team being out there to, uh, do their thing, the dance team doing their thing. I remember, um, last year when we had a home, the, the home game, we were able to hack bullet, and the field was not okay for kids to tumble on on the new turf, the thimble. Uh, so everybody got to do their thing, there was potential, the marching band. I know the drum majors, she's a senior this year, this was her first show at her old school to do, do this in front of everybody. And it's that spirit of community that we work on, uh, as parents, as a community as a whole. I think that maybe we'll start to see some of the animosity, because I think we all know how those kids are feeling. Uh, you can't say anything you want on a keyboard, and social media hurts. And so when you get face to face with people, it's not surprising when they're, they're teenagers and they can't act like one of us after they have been hurt on social media. So I guess my ask is, if we can look forward, are there strategic planning coming up? Um, I think it would be amazing if we could all work together to make this the community that I know we absolutely are. I saw it Friday night, uh, I've seen it in the past, I saw it on the weekend through COVID together. I think that would be great, those dates are open, um, and it's a weekend, one weekend for the cause. And to that end, which is sort of new business, um, I had set an advanced idea or a thought in terms of policy, um, talking about athletics as a form of, a supplement of strategic planning from the coaches, coach turnover, and possibly, um, some policies around athletics. So I just wanted to put that on the radar for strategic planning.
Um, I'm going to ask you, if I could, for one second, just to reiterate that I was grateful for the respect and that assembly that, um, the entire corporate staff, um, and council put together. They had a bicyclist come in person, and the kids were just wild about it. They learned all about respect, and I thought it was a really great, um, assembly, um, coming up.
Wait, I'm sorry, what did they have?
They had, it was a assembly, the respect, and they actually had a bicyclist, bicyclist.
Oh, bicyclist.
That was, yeah, we met that guy. And, um, it was a virtual, um, as well as having an event, you know, ICOM? And my son was just, I mean, he was just buzzing about it, and all the kids were just so excited about it. And I actually sent a note of thanks and gratitude, um, to all the staff, the council, who had a big part to play. But I know that they also did a day, each day was a different press, and all the kids, I saw the pictures on P T O page. And mentioning the P T O page, we have an event coming up that's like a huge, uh, coverage. So I know that's another thing that's going to be free, it's not going to cost anything to the families. And, um, it's on the twenty-nine, which is the same day as the first. So they are current, um, at Clifford, to really do a lot of community events, and they're all coming up. And they're always on the P T O website. So, um, I know that they're really doing a lot over there, and I'm very grateful.
I'm not going to be partial, but that is my favorite school all time, ever, forever, in my heart, which, yeah. I'll never, I'll never wane from that, sorry, going to other elementary schools, ladies down there, sorry.
Well, Timmy loved it, so it was a real big, um, moment of happiness, I think.
I just wanted to kind of wrap this up with the, um, idea of this community, to, you know, um, team building, getting everyone together, trying to get the students, um, I guess, bonding, socially interact. So as a board, we don't deal with the day-to-day activities in each school. So as I'm hearing today, the parents that are here are mentioning M A M S. And as though we have good things happening at the high school field and Clifford, I, I would hope that the administration at M A M S, um, kind of takes a look at the safety and the conduct of the students there, to see what they can do specifically in that building. Um, I think every board member would kind of agree that that has to somehow, um, be looked at a little closer.
I think Ms. Perez said that that's a factor, was they would come and look into it. We want to make sure that that happens.
Yes, that's my own guess, but that's what we're looking at, and I'm really only making sure that they're offered the same opportunities.
Ms. Perez, may I ask that may be updated to whatever we can recall about, um, the findings or what we are able to be shared in the situation now?
Yes, but just for clarification at the next, um, where we. Yeah, okay, thank you. Ms. Butler?
Uh, Penny, can I just have something a little off topic? I know that we all talk about, um, different things with different schools. And you know that the children are so excited to get back in the mornings and also evenings in different school buildings. We have the parents picking up and dropping off our children. Um, the thing for me is a little bit, um, the environmental mugging me, is that the, the law in New Jersey, I'm not preaching law here, because that was some correction, but the idling for vehicles is three minutes in the state of New Jersey. And the children in the middle school and high school, they don't need as much to sit and wait for them with a, a car that's cool or a car that's heated up. They come out the building without a jacket or jacket on. But if you pull up to the building and you notice that, um, not only is everybody's parked there, a little hard, but the teachers are teaching with their windows open for fresh air. And it's kind of hard to have fresh air coming in the middle of the car, it's all running. Everybody just has a brand new vehicle, some vehicles are idling, parents are there at their homes, socializing, whatever they may be doing for the next third time. But I just want parents to understand that the chemicals are harmful, um, the children are breathing them in, and they're sitting in their classrooms learning, um, receiving their education in the middle of the building at the end of the day, or even the beginning of the day, as parents are waiting for these school buildings to open up, and children are standing outside waiting. So just, I just want everybody to be mindful of the safety and all, you know, overall health and wellness of our children, as we talk about different things, the social norms you're learning, this chemical imbalance, these things all play a part in it. So if we can, um, shut off preventions, you know, if your child is coming out at two thirty-four, then cut it on, because it's two minutes. But, um, just try not to idle in front of the building, and just leave them running like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you think there's signage that we could?
We've done signage.
Okay.
Sign draw.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, be resolved?
I'm sorry, it's not for us, Lloyd, it's the police department that runs that. So the school board has no jurisdiction to go out and put labels or anything on teachers, I mean, uh, parents' vehicles. We don't have any right to tell them, shut their vehicles off, that's a part of the police department. I'm just saying, as a parent, my child is at these schools, and, you know, they're, they're in the classrooms, we refuse to come in, so.
Thank you. Be you resolved that closed session be convened for the purposes of discussing parents, personnel, and legal matters? The subject matter of this discussion will be disclosed to the public and the reason for competent geology subsides. While the board cannot guarantee that the length of the executive session is estimated to be twenty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed the business. Action will not take place. Can I get a brochure, something like that? Um, okay, I'll start it. Um, favor?